Good evening, everyone. Welcome, people in the audience and people at home. We already had our Fledge Legions and road call because we had a closed session. So now we're going to continue with Discover Mokina. And first up will be the Mokina Lions Club Firecracker Fest, Mr. Israel Smith.
Good evening. All right. Well, thank you very much for highlighting our event and having us come tonight. I saw what Festa did last week. I couldn't get anybody to put on that show. I'm sorry. That was really, really fun.
Are you going to sing, Israel?
I am not going to sing, and you're welcome. So I want to first talk a little bit about who the Mokina Lions are. We were started in Mokina in 1953, so we've been serving Mokina for the past 72 years. All of our funds that we raise through these events stay local to help those in need and organizations that we support and share a mission with. The mission of the Lions International is to help hunger, childhood cancer, vision and hearing, and much more. The Lions Club in Mokina put on an annual pancake breakfast. We do an Easter egg hunt at the main park. We give food baskets four times a year to those in need. We give scholarships to high school students and so much more. We're all very proud to be part of this organization that's been serving Mokina for so long. And this year, we're really excited to change up our Firecracker Fest. It's been the Firecracker Dance for the past 36 years, and we wanted to mix it up. And so we're not only changing the name, we're also moving this year to the brand-new, renovated Red Barn at the Yunker Farms and the band show there. So we have a... It's also going to be all ages this year, which will be different. So we want to welcome families and more family-friendly things towards the beginning as well. And we're going to have live bands and food trucks. Friday night, we're going to do a bingo night for fun bingo in the new barn. It's going to be a lot of fun there with some drinks and food trucks out there. And then Saturday, we're really excited. The police and the fire department are allowing us to host their Battles of the Badges softball game. So that's going to be starting at 12:30 at Main Park, and we're going to be hosts to that. And I just heard confirmed today, we have a celebrity throwing out the first pitch, our own Mr. Mayor George Martini, so.
I don't want to hurt the catcher's eye in his head if I'm in the closing.
That's right. And, you know, we're so grateful to them. They're donating all the proceeds. Everything we raise is coming to the Mokina Lions Club. So thank you, Chief, and to Chief Joe at the fire department as well. Saturday, so again, after that, we'll lead right into our fest. The gates open at 3 o'clock, and we've got live bands, food trucks, and it's just going to be a totally different feel than we've had before on Front Street. So we have fired chicken and woulda, coulda, shoulda, our main bands. We have $4,500 in cash prizes that come with your $10 entry fee to the fest. So we hope you all come out, and thank you very much again for supporting our event as well as for having us speak and share about it tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next time is community calendar. Clerk Martini.
Community calendar for June 2025. June 30th through July 3rd, the Mokina Park District's Skyhawks Multi-Sports Camp is at the Fox Ridge Park from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at 19740 Telluride Avenue. It's for ages 7 to 12. Pre-registration is required. Register at www.mokinapark.com or call 708-390-2401 for more information. Then we move on to July with July 1st being the recycle day. July 3rd, the Mokina Park District and Village of Mokina's Independence Day Celebration is happening at Main Park. It starts at 4:00 p.m. at 10925 LaPorte Road. Free parking and family-friendly entertainment with the fireworks show at dusk, which is approximately 9:30 p.m. July 4th, the Village Hall is closed in observance of the Independence Day, and we will reopen at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, July 7th. July 4th is also the Chamber of Commerce Fourth of July Parade at 10:00 a.m. Step-off is at LaPorte Road and Mokina Street, and it ends at Granite Drive. July 7th, the Mokina Fire Department's CPR class is from 5:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 19853 South Wolf Road. For more information and/or registration online at mokinafire.org or at station number one. And July 8th, the Mokina Park District Movie in the Park featuring Moana 2 is at the Yunker Farm Band Show, starting at 8:30 p.m. or dusk at 10824 LaPorte Road. July 14th, Village of Mokina, I'm sorry, Village Board of Trustees meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Village Hall.
Thank you, Clerk Martini.
You're welcome.
Public comments. Anyone for public comments? Thanks, Kevin. Okay, no public comments. This is Code of Consent Agenda. Mr. Tomasowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Consent agenda is as follows. First item is a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-2002, a resolution pertaining to the maintenance of streets and highways by a municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. I'm authorized the village president and the village clerk to execute the same. Second item is a motion to improve the engagement letter with the Aincora Consulting Group, LLC, on the terms and conditions that are stated. I authorize the village president and the village clerk to execute the same, subject to review and approval by the village attorney. Third item is a motion to approve the Village of Mokina Ordinance 2025-O-009, an ordinance repealing Title II, Chapter 7 and 8, and amending Title VIII, Chapter 1, Section 9 of the Mokina Village Order as presented. The final item is a motion to approve the Order of June 9, 2025, for me.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Motion, please.
Move to approve consent to judge Dungo, Item 7, A, B, C, and D as depicted in the June 19, 2025 request for board action prepared by the village administrator.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Special finance report. Again, Mr. Tomasowski, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. In the last meeting over at fiscal year, we have the second accounts payable. June here totaling $665,440.33.
That's it? Motion, please.
Move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $665,440.33.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Our next... Our next is appointments and proclamations. Appointments of officers fiscal year 2025 and 26. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody that's on our commissions that are putting in the time and the effort every year that... It's a great thing to see people volunteer. With that said, I'm also recommended to suspend two of our committees, which is the EDC and the Spark Committee, in order to fast-track our process. It's one of the things that developers have said to us about, you know, our process takes too long. And nothing against anybody on those commissions, everybody on there, the men and women are doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate everything you've done on the commission. And I would also like to be able to keep the names, if there's any openings anywhere else for you to go into. So I thank you guys tremendously for that. All the commissions that all the trustees have, everybody pretty much stays on there. We have one new member going on planning a zoning, and that's Colleen Leonard, Kelly Patrick Leonard. And we're going to welcome you, Colleen, and if you have anything to say, please step up.
I guess I'd start with saying thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the board for this appointment. I'm honored and excited to serve the community in this way. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to the challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. I appreciate it. I know you'll do a fantastic job. With that said, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 appointments as denoted in the June 2025... Request for board action submitted by Village President George James.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Clerk?
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
We have a motion probably second, and motion passed. Welcome, Colleen. Thank you. Next is old business, grocery tax orders. Mr. Tomasowski.
Thank you, Mayor. A little PowerPoint here to cover the topic this evening. A little background here, the state of Illinois repealed the 1% statewide grocery tax, effective January 1, 2026. The state Illinois legislation, this all happened here in actually the spring session of 2024, put some time forward on it. So we're talking about it now. For those that watch state government, like I said, it would have been the spring session of 2024, the governor and the state legislative, state government here took this action. It was under Public Act 103-0781, which allows municipalities to impose a municipal 1% grocery tax. Mokina stands to lose approximately $850,000 in annual revenue, and it's hard to figure out this exact figure. So that is a conservative number, a little bit on, if anything, on the high side, but certainly in the ballpark of where we're at. And this revenue is in our general fund, which currently supports certain things such as public safety, street maintenance, and other community service items that the villages here produces. And just to kind of highlight what that $850,000 means, when the overall revenue projected here for the state income tax here for this current, this next fiscal year, which begins July 1st, that would represent approximately 11.5%. From a little more information, the repeal framed as a consumer relief by the state, although I want to duly note, the state kept in this action, they kept their portion of the grocery tax. They removed the local municipalities' portion. The state retains other grocery-related revenues that did not offset municipal losses for that move, and the municipalities must act to maintain funding. Now, the specific authority under is 65 ILCS 5/8-11-24. This grants the non-home rule municipalities authority to impose that 1% grocery retailer's occupation tax and the 1% grocery service occupation tax. This tax is administered and enforced by the Illinois Department of Revenue, the IDOR, and in order to comply and continue to maintain that funding, a certified ordinance must be filed with IDOR by October 1, 2025, in order to begin to maintain that grocery sales tax January 1, 2026. In the Village of Mokina, grocery tax, you know, you equate it to naturally grocery, grocery stores, which is true, which is for us, our three big players, and that would be Myers, Burkhart, Broketer Marketplace. But when you understand the tax and the groceries, other places that come into play are various gas stations, other places that sell grocery-related items such as CVS and those types of stores as well. From regional trends and how other municipalities are handling this, grocery sales tax for any community of size that has grocery stores in it is significant. So once again, the deadline to comply and not have any break in funding is October 1 down to the state. So between now and then, various other communities, I'm sure, will work on it. But listed on the slide is the current known communities of Will County, Coak County, DePage, Kane, and then working with the Will County Governmental League, the 100, not excuse me, not 100, but over 25 of the communities said verbally stated at some point during the session that they would look to approve to maintain the grocery tax here as well. Now, one thing the village has done throughout the years now and in the past is always try to balance here the amount of taxes to the residents to provide high-quality services, not to try to overburn the taxes and understanding some of the difficulties with the tax structure in Illinois already on the residents. So as part of that, with decisions like this, we'll be trying to keep your other rates low, such as our property tax, which the last one we're showing here is the 2023 municipal tax rate, where we compared some other communities with our local municipal tax rate. Obviously, try to work to keep that very low every year for our taxpayers as well. And then even looking at the big picture, sales tax in and of itself. Highlighted on the slide is the percent sales tax for us and our neighboring communities. As you can see with us being circled, 7.5 is the lowest overall, and that's the overall sales tax for this area. There is no utility taxes, as recalled here in Mokina, which is only to be electric, electric tax or natural gas tax on your common Aincor bills. The village does not do that. And also, to maintain strong funding, still has that AA+ bond rating. And the police pension fund, the last time we got its evaluation was at just over 82%. So it remains strong, obviously, for the village. Strong financially run is important, but also the mayor and board, this mayor and board, the past mayor and boards have always wanted to be very fair to the pocket folks of the residents as well. And naturally, one part of any sales tax that is beneficial, that benefits the local residents and businesses, is more than Mokina residents and businesses utilize our businesses, therefore paying to our sales tax, whereas the mayor and board fully understand the property taxes, the utility taxes, the water sewer rates directly come from our residents and our businesses. So if approved, this would become effective January 1st. And what it would do is it would maintain the grocery taxes, sales tax for the Village of Mokina going forward. The IDOR would administer and collect on behalf of the village, and there would be no interruption abruptly. That, mayor and board, if there's any questions or comments, I know we had a detailed discussion here at the board session last week.
Take your turn. Motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025-O-010, implementing a 1% municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a 1% municipal grocery service occupation tax in the Village of Mokina, effective January 1, 2026, and to direct the village clerk to file a certified copy of the ordinance with the Illinois Department of Revenue no later than October 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Just real quick before I go on the board, old residents to understand, this is not, we're not raising your taxes 1%. That's what it was. Apparently, the governor decided to take that away, and we're just putting that back the same amount. So you're not getting any, anything more than what you were paying before. We were paying, as I say. So I just wanted to make that clear that we're not raising any taxes. All we're doing is putting back the taxes that come away. So anybody have anything to add?
I'm glad you clarified that, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, I am too. It seemed just to be a political snot down in Springfield, so thank you for the clarification.
Awesome. Okay, Clerk Martini, take your role, please.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next is compensation resolution for non-residential employees. Mr. Tomasowski, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. What's before the board is here in a resolution form, which it would allow here for the beginning of our fiscal year July 1st, consistent with all our union contracts, is a 3% raise in pay for the non-union personnel as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Motion, please.
Move to approve resolution number 2025-R-004, a resolution adjusting the salaries of those Village of Mokina employees not covered by the labor contract.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Clerk Martini, take your role, please.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. New business, closed session minutes review. Mr. Tomasowski, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. Consistent with the Open Meetings Act, the mayor and board should have a semi-annual review of the closed session minutes. Based on that, it's being recommended that the board find the need for confidentiality exists for all the closed session minutes not previously approved due to any litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Motion, please.
Move to approve the semi-annual review of closed session minutes and to find that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes and verbatim recordings not previously approved pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2.06D.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, next is bid recommendation for calorie pear tree removal. Christopher Walton. John, you're not up this time.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the urban forestry panel work, the village arborist applied for and was awarded a grant for invasive parkway tree removal. The grant was awarded through the Morton Arboretum as part of the Chicago Region Tree Initiative. The target for removals are calorie pears, which were designated as invasive species by the state of Illinois in 2023. The calorie pears are commonly used ornamental, especially parkway tree, because it grows fast, has beautiful white flowery, and it's great foliage, and it's rapid growth. However, the calorie pear is problematic in that it is generally a weak tree. It is susceptible to a lot of damage, especially in snow and ice storms, right at the face of the limbs and the tree trunk, especially when they reach a certain height and length. They're much more susceptible in ice storms. The village was awarded this grant from the Morton Arboretum and to systematically remove the problem trees. We will be replacing them as part of the grant program as a 2:1 ratio, and that will be done as suffered. Project has approximately 16 calorie pears that will be removed throughout towns with roughly 10 along Front Street. As this will be an ongoing task throughout the years, this will be the first step in that process. And as the trees are designated, they'll be marked with a green dot or an X prior to the contractor having them removed. And then after they're removed, the stump will be ground, and then depending on if there's room or not for a replacement in that particular location, then staff will assess how many, or if we can put a tree back in that particular place. If it's not replaced with a tree, then it will be removed, the stump will be removed, and it will be blackdirted and seeded. Staff received a total of five actual qualified bids, with the low bidder being Homer Tree Care in the amount of $15,484. Homer Tree Care is a known, a well-known entity in the region in this particular type of work. Therefore, staff is recommending that we award the bid in that amount of $15,484 to Homer Tree Care.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Motion, please.
Move to award the contract for the calorie pear tree removal program for fiscal year 2026 to Homer Tree Service of Lockport, Illinois, in the amount of $15,484, and authorize village president, village clerk, and village staff to execute necessary contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Anybody have any questions? Okay, Clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Exxon Camera Agreement. Mr. Brian Button.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and board, currently, all the cars in our department fleet are equipped with WatchGuard in-car video systems, which we implemented back in 2017. WatchGuard has been a reliable in-car video platform with exceptional technical support up until recently. Unfortunately, a few years ago now, WatchGuard was purchased by Motorola, and the support has suffered significantly. As of 2024, Motorola is no longer offering software maintenance or updating our in-car systems. The typical life of an in-car video system is around eight years, which we have now surpassed. Now, there are many different vendors that offer in-car video systems, each with their own software for managing the recorded data. A more efficient option provides for a unified system that creates a consistent integrated platform with our existing system, which is Exxon. Our neighboring agencies have all also integrated. There are three video systems under the Exxon's unified platform. Additionally, Will County State's Attorney's Office is licensed through Exxon, which will provide law enforcement the ability to provide a direct portal between agencies and streamline the transfer of secure data. The board has previously approved the purchase and installation of our new digital audio and video recording system in the interview rooms for the new police station, as well as all the body worn camera systems that we have that are all from Exxon Enterprises. Exxon is a dominant provider for management and processing of police digital evidence, with the parent company and sole provider of TASER, and is a sole source provider for Exxon and TASER products and services through their proprietary Evidence.com platform. Evidence.com is a federated system that stores digital video and audio captured on body cameras, interview rooms, in-car systems, and through TASER radio, and can be accessed directly by the state's police office as a courtesy state. Exxon's proposal consists of a five-year payment plan for the hardware, software, licensing, and maintenance. The cost per year would be $35,305.20 for the first year, and $35,305.20 for the remaining four years, for a total cost of $176,526. This amount has been included and approved in our fiscal year 2026 budget. Based on the level of support, community service is a reputation of Exxon Enterprises for performance and service. Staff believes that this is the best system and service that the village can obtain. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation to waive the bidding requirements for this project. Staff has concurred with Attorney Buck, who concurred with Staff's assessment. The vote or proposal attached from Exxon Enterprises' sole source letter are both adept for review. Per Attorney Buck, this action is allowed pursuant to 5/8-9-1 and 8-9-2 of the Illinois municipal code. To the board, it's service staff's recommendation. Motion, please.
Thank you, Chief. Motion, please.
Move to approve a contract with Exxon Enterprises for a five-year term at a total cost of $176,526, including $35,305.20 for the first year and $35,305.20 per year for the remaining four years, and to waive the bidding requirements pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/8-9-1 due to the specialized nature of this equipment and service, and to direct the village president and village clerk to execute the same.
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Anybody have any questions on this? I see. Mr. Martini, please, roll call. I see Melissa Martini, please, roll call.
Trustee Engler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Those are the administrator comments.
Thank you, mayor. Well, the chief lead us off here.
Okay, Mr. Tomasowski. Mayor and board, the Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics is the single largest year-round fundraising vehicle benefiting Special Olympics in Illinois. The annual interstate relay and its various fundraising projects set two goals, to raise money, maybe an awareness for the athletes who participate in Special Olympics in Illinois. Traditionally, more than 3,000 officers in Illinois run more than 1,500 miles, carrying the flame of hope through the streets of their hometowns and deliver to the state's Summer Games in Normal at each June. On June 18th, members of our department participated in this year's torch run. They received the torch from Allen Site's Police Department at 191st and McGrane, and then ran a two-mile leg to hand the torch off to the Frankfurt Police Department. Once their leg was completed, tomorrow, farmers welcomed all officers back for a wonderful lunch, which they provided by their amazing team. So again, we'd like to thank the officers who took their time out to run this event, represent the Mokina Police Department as well. I personally like to thank Officer Jeff Walcheck, because he has been the driving force for Special Olympics in our department, whether it's top on top, or whether it's the torch run, so he really does motivate our officers and get them to support this very worthwhile cause. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, chief. Update here from our DPW director, Mr. Clope.
Just a quick note to the public and some of our residents pertaining to the contract that we just authorized, our calorie tree program, our removal program will proceed. And a couple things just to note, a couple reasons that, you know, these are invasive trees that were taken out, and it's a little bit different than what we've seen traditionally with some of our other tree removal programs. Those are like the EAB program, those trees were clearly in distress and health issues. With the calorie pear, it's invasive, but it's a little bit hard to detect some of the problems that are there, as they may look more healthy than what we're traditionally used to. There is a good reason for removing them and keeping our urban forestry healthy. If you click to that next page, you'll see these are some of the problematic issues with it, and we're trying to get ahead of those, so as we're removing those trees, just keep that in mind. And here's just a couple examples of what the calorie pear traditionally does. So we'll work with our residents, try and notify them, and communicate with them, and let them know what's happening when this bunch of bugs.
Thank you, Mr. Clope. A few more updates here. ComEd want to highlight their customer relief fund. ComEd is joining with the Neighborhood Housing Services of Chicago, and salvation are going to launch what they call the ComEd Customer Relief Fund, a one-time program to support eligible ComEd customers experiencing higher energy costs during peak summer months and the months ahead. It's a $10 million relief fund made possible through a one-time charitable contribution. So beginning July 7th, eligible ComEd customers will be able to apply for relief through this fund. And so how to apply eligibility, and once again, this information's on our website as well, but go here to www.comed.com backslash relief for step-by-step guidance. So anyone interested there in taking a look, which also includes qualified 501(c)(3) nonprofit Clerk Martini covered this, but we used a flyer here as well. Right around the corner is the July 3rd celebration here, and it's a partnership here at the Park District here in the Village of Mokina. So full evening and afternoon of events, 4:00 to 6:30. It's really focused on family time, free kids' games and playables. 4:30 to 10:30, there'll be food trucks at the main park. Trustee Engler worked here with the Park Districts to use a lot of the food trucks from front here, and there's a list on the side, and a couple more coming on top of that. And then the encore of concrete, or the concert, mayor, excuse me, and then the main entertainment, the family performer, coming out with some magic and art as well. 28 Days Band will go on at 7:30 to 9:30, and then the fireworks. And then we do have the pleasure this year of having 28 Days come on after the fireworks for a little bit as well. So all come out, enjoy our July 3rd celebration, which will lead us into our parade here on July 4th. And last but not least is with all the heat, the police department is available as a temporary cooling center if necessary. Call our police non-emergency number 708-479-3912 to make arrangements. And as always, if everyone could during this extreme weather condition, please check on relatives, neighbors, friends, especially the elderly, those maybe in poor health, pets, so everyone can make it through these next, this next bellhop letter. That's what we have, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Trustee comments. Trustee Engler.
Oh, yes, I had the honor of being out there for the Special Olympics torch run, to cheer on our police event, and it was an amazing event, because there were Cook County, Will County, a bunch of people on bike, bicycles and whatever, and it was a great thing to see. I'm not so sure the people on the grand tour were happy when they pulled out of the Shell Station, but you know what, they got over it, I'm sure. And then also, due to the July 3rd thing, remember, we will not have food trucks on July 2nd on Front Street, everything's moving to the 3rd in the park, and a new restaurant opened in town, Taco Tavern, it's down the hill by Stony Point, so check it out, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Germany.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to give a big shout out to Melissa Fedora, the Cindy Gannon for the parade they put together over here. I look forward to it, it's one of my favorite, ever since I've come to Mokina 35 years ago, but you guys really do a heck of a job. Thank you, Trustee Engler, for working with the Park District and getting the food trucks over there. Thank you for your hard work and everybody in the fort. Let's let the fireworks be in the park and not in your backyard. Please, let the professionals do it, and I truly ask you not to start blowing off at midnight on Sunday, and then Monday morning at 3 o'clock in the morning. It's hard on the small children, and it's really hard on the animals. Just be safe, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, and have a great Fourth of July.
Thank you, Mr. Germany. Trustee Clancy.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, Trustee Germany and I went and took a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, and it's just one of those things, it's out of sight, out of mind, you don't really pay attention to what goes down your drain too often, but then when you're actually there in person, you really see what a sophisticated process that we have right here in our backyard. So just really appreciative of being able to be walked through that whole process, and really just got an education from Dan and Jamie, I think, is it Tim?
Yep.
Yeah, so that was really cool, being able to do that. And then, yeah, lastly, have a good Fourth of July, everybody. The parade is awesome, comes right by our corner, there's a cool coffee shop on the corner. Welcome to the court, and we get a front row seat of all the floods coming by, so it's really cool, and yeah, have fun, be safe.
Thank you, Trustee Clancy. Trustee Bailey.
Thank you, mayor. I was gonna invite everyone over to my house on Sunday night to light off fireworks. Trustee Germany just wrecked it for me. I didn't have anything, just a reminder to be safe, but, you know, but people kind of drive and conduct themselves absent of their brains over the holidays, so just to be safe out there. That's all I got, mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Fedora.
Thank you. Just to let you know, you can still get entries in for the Fourth of July parade. The deadline shows that it's passed, but we can still get you in, you would just be a little further towards the back, but applications are still available at mokina.com. Come and join us.
Thank you, Clerk Martini.
Actually, I do have something.
Yeah, all right.
My daughter-in-law, Sarah Martini, who graduated from U of I back in day with her PhD in animal nutrition, was invited to a symposium down in Memphis this weekend, the 25th Annual Clinical Nutrition and Research Symposium, where she presented all her found findings, I always call them. She walked away with the first prize.
Wow. Congratulations.
She gathered all the documents, played tricks to Germany, where she will be presenting it to the European version of the Annual Clinical Nutrition and Research Symposium.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I let her know that my passport is up to date and if there was one needed, I could leave in a drop of a hat.
So she's dating you with her, Germany?
I have not gotten it officially, but I'll answer every phone call that comes from her.
There are comments. First, I want to say to Jean, happy birthday, Jean. And many, 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 why?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Jean. Happy birthday to you.
Yeah. Jean, you're here for all the meetings, so you're proud of us now, so we're just happy. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's what I want to say, the Village of Mokina's free shred event on Saturday was a big success. We probably had approximately, give or take, 300 cars that came by.
Some twice.
Some twice, I'm not saying it. But it's, everybody was really excited, real happy that this is happening, and it's a free event to the residents, which is something that, you know, something to give back to them, you know, it's a small thing, but I think a lot of people that collect things like myself, you know, for years, especially like bank statements or paychecks and so on, it was an opportunity for them to get rid of them. And it was actually myself, Jim Richmond, and Patrick Sheehan that sponsored this. And you had, like I said before, you had local government, you had county government, you had state government, all working together, which that's how it should be, I think, you know, throughout. So it was a great event, and we're looking to make it even better next time, maybe food pantry, people bring food, and we can take it to the food pantry and so on. So it's, it's gonna get bigger and better, we're probably gonna have it again one more time before winter comes, I'm not sure exactly when yet, but it's nice that we had it in our downtown area for, you know, so people can come out there and enjoy it, and me for the first time, it was, everybody followed the rules and came around where they're supposed to be, so it was great to see that again. I also want to welcome Colleen Patrick Leonard to our Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and I encourage everybody, please come to our Fourth of July fireworks on the 3rd, parade on the 4th, the Fire Cracker Fest, I think it's gonna be an amazing time, because now it's not just adults anymore, so it's family oriented, so you want to bring your kids, have a really nice time. And then on Saturday, come and watch me smoke that ball into the catcher's eye. It's gonna hurt his glove, I know that, but that'd be awesome. And again, it's gonna be hot the next few days, 90s, please be careful, stay indoors, and I think if we have the police station, there's a heat relief if anybody needs to do that, but, you know, it's common sense when you're out there and doing things, and don't try to do everything when it's real hot like that. And Taco Tavern, I was able to go there on their soft opening, Melissa Fedora was there also. Fantastic food, I'm telling you, I enjoyed it a lot, so support our businesses, support our new Taco Tavern, and anything else that comes to our town. With that, I don't have anything more to say, except gotta get a motion to move it to work session.
Second.
You have a motion probably second. Everybody say aye or nay. Aye. Motion passed. We are adjourned, and we'll be going into work.